The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 11th, 2024. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News and TAP into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America. Consider the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I will call the roll. Mr. DeSai. Mrs. Whitebaum. Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Malfeta. Mr. Otto.
Here.
Mr. Tor.
Here.
Mr. Valentino.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein. Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the January 8th, 2024 Board Meeting.
Second.
Right now, I'll call the roll on the minutes. Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mr. Tor.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
No correspondence or HIV reports today. There was one out-of-school suspension at the middle school, and for board members in your packet, there was a reference to an out-of-school suspension at another school. That was from last meeting. Just the middle school was the new one.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the Board of Education. Last week included some challenging weather and road conditions, and I want to take a moment to express the board's appreciation for the partnership that we share with the town, the Department of Public Works, the Office of Emergency Management, the police, and of course, our own wonderful staff. The excellent communications between these parties, including some communications that were done in the dead of night, resulted in the experienced closures being less than we feared that they might have been. So I know it was frustrating for people, but with the cooperation of all of the local authorities, we were able to keep moving forward with our school week. On tonight's agenda, the board is the board approval for advancement on the salary guide. Pardon me. Congratulations to the three staff members who have worked hard at continuing their education and bringing those skills and talents to our district. Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you. Just to reiterate Mrs. Zahn's points, our staff did a great job with the storms. We do, we do know the inconvenience to our Mount Hora families with the emergency closing due to a building issue. Thank you to Mr. Cook and the staff that was already on site at Mount Hora because their quick action in response to that actually saved us a significant risk to safety of staff, students, and also facility. And then Mr. Payton and his team was able to get the building ready to go again for the next morning, which is, which was not a small feat considering the water leak that we were dealing with. So thank you to everybody there. The other thing I wanted to mention, and on that, sorry, the Mount Hora parents have received this communication already, but just to reiterate, Mount Hora will need to make up that one day of school compared to the rest of the district. This has happened periodically throughout the years. It basically means that the year will end one day later at Mount Hora than the other schools. We'll put all that in writing once we get through the winter and we know exactly what the day is. The other thing I wanted to mention is that it is School Board Appreciation Month in New Jersey, and I just wanted to read the statement by the governor to that effect. It's very brief, so just give me one second here. Whereas New Jersey's public schools serve nearly 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas New Jersey's approximately 5,000 local Board of Education members and charter school and Renaissance School Project Board of Trustee members devote countless hours without remuneration to the oversight of public school operations, including finances, policy, curriculum, and staffing. And whereas, as the policymaking bodies for public schools, New Jersey's local Boards of Education endeavor to meet the challenges facing public schools and to help students attain the education necessary for post-secondary success and to compete in a global economy. And whereas, local Boards of Education have contributed to New Jersey being among the leading states in measures of academic and the preparation for post-secondary attainment through advanced placement courses and other curricular offerings. And whereas, January 2024 has been declared School Board Recognition Month for the meaningful contributions to public education of all of the members of local school boards. On behalf of the Warren Township School District, our employees and staff, thank you to the members of our Board of Education. It is a significant commitment of time, seen and unseen, and we appreciate your volunteerism for the community.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We do have a presentation this evening. It is the audit report.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve McDermott, and I am with Suppley Cluney and Company. We conducted the audit fieldwork primarily in August and tied up some loose ends just going into December, so the reports are now finalized and filed with the state at this point. I'll keep my presentation brief. We'll just go over a bit of what we actually present in the reports. The final product of what we do is two reports. One is known as the ACFOR, or the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That contains the district's financial statements, our opinion on those financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, and the statistical section presenting information about the district and the municipality. We also present the AMR, or Auditor's Management Report, which is the smaller report you would have gotten, and that contains findings on the different areas that the Department of Education requires us to report on, such as administrative practices and procedures, financial planning, accounting and reporting, school purchasing programs, food service, student activities, the application for state school aid, transportation and facilities, and capital assets. You may remember this slide from last year. It sparked some discussion about upcoming accounting changes. So those changes are here. Implementation of GASB 96. And as far as Warren Township is concerned, it ended up not being that much of an issue because there were certain criteria that these contracts had to meet in order to be reported in the financial statements, and one of them being the length of time of the contracts and the materiality of them. So there actually are no SABITAS, which is an acronym for subscription-based information technology arrangements, in your ACFOR this year. We will continue to keep an eye on that with Chris and the IT department going forward to see if there are any others that need to be reported going forward. So this year, the findings and recommendations, which would be reported in the AMR, there was nothing deemed significant or material that needed to be reported in the management report. That is an improvement from last year where there was one issue that was reported, which was an isolated incident and was handled properly this year. And also in the ACFOR, there's what's known as the Audit Opinion, and that is reported as unmodified this year. That is the good opinion. That's what you guys want. It means that there are no departures from where things are supposed to be in the report, basically. Okay. Now I can go over the fund balance on the budgetary basis. In the ACFOR, there's an exhibit called the C1, which reports your general fund revenues and expenditures, and at the bottom of that, there's a recap of fund balances, which I've copied to this slide. So your total fund balance on that budgetary basis as of June 30th, 2023, was $14,624,23. And what that was made up of is $315,637 of reserve for encumbrances, $10,836,984, which was your capital reserve, your maintenance reserve is $118,800, the emergency reserve was $11,659, the reserve for unemployment was $535,077. Your excess surplus, which resulted from the year of audit, it says current year, but that's as of 6/30/23, which is required to be used in your fiscal year '25 budget that you're working on now, is $585,000. And the amount designated from this fund balance that's being used in the budget year that we're in right now is $584,000. And then your unrestricted fund balance, which is at the maximum per the state's calculation, is $1,637,065. I always like to go over things that might impact your financial statements going forward. There's actually nothing significant going on for this year that we're in right now, but for the year after that, the next thing coming up is what they call GASB 101 for fiscal year '25 implementation, and that deals with your compensated absences, your accrued sick time or vacation time for employees. And the regulations on that have kind of been piecemeal over the years, and this statement here is kind of a formal sentence from GASB, but in a nutshell, they're looking to streamline and standardize the process of reporting compensated absences across all government entities. So we're not really sure of the details on that yet, but as we get closer to it, we will look at that and make sure that you guys are aware of anything that you need to be aware of to report it properly. At this time, if you guys have any questions related to the audit, I'd be happy to take them.
Does any board member have any question?
I would just like to draw attention to one number, and that is the capital reserve number that's listed at about $10,800,000, and just remind people that a good portion of that is committed to referendum projects from our last referendum and does not represent an available capital reserve for future projects.
Right. Yeah, we're aware of that. It's just the way the statements are presented, there's not really a way to work that into the template, but we've had that discussion with Chris, and I'm aware of that also.
Right. I just wanted the public to know that in case they saw $10 million in cap reserve.
Actually, to be more specific, that most of that, most of that amount has already been spent. It was spent actually a week after this date because that's when the debt payment was due.
Exactly.
Yeah. So it's more in the line of $4,800,000 than $10,800,000. And while I'm speaking, I'd also just like to thank Steve and his team for a job well done when they were out with us in doing their fieldwork. And I'd also like to thank my business office staff, Mary Grace, Sally, Darlene, and Denise. Having, having all of your work looked at on an annual basis for a three- or four-week period is a daunting task, and they amaze me every year in doing such a great job with it, so I want to just thank them for, for that. And we look forward to seeing you again this August.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Chris. Yeah, you and the staff are great to work with. I understand the audit process is a little intrusive, but we, we try to do it as gently and friendly as possible.
And I didn't mean that that way.
But yeah, I appreciate you guys and hope you have a good night. Any other questions?
I just want to, I mean, Chris, you kind of stole my thunder here because I was going to then move on to thanking you and your business staff. It is remarkable, of note. I think everyone should, should take note of the fact that this is again a, you know, an audit report that's perfectly clean, and that is because of the work of the Business Administration's office. So thank you.
All right.
Any other questions from board members? No? Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we do have a discussion item tonight. This is the annual discussion of the norms for board communication and operations, which is a document that the board has adopted for its own purpose, for the, to guide us in managing the Board of Education and its communication and operations. This last was reviewed a year ago, and there was a meaningful event in the middle of that year that I just want to draw everyone's attention to, and that is that at the March 20th, 2023 Board Meeting, the board discussed circumstances under which a board member could participate remotely. We never memorialized any of that discussion, but the key takeaways were that remote participation would be on an as-needed, you know, need-by-basis, on a case-by-case basis, and that the board also discussed the importance of maintaining an in-person quorum. So this is the first review of the board norms since that meeting. So there's been some language changes proposed in the draft of the norms that have been circulated to the board members to memorialize the attendance and remote access norms that we had discussed at that meeting. You'll see that they're primarily focused on timeframes for notice of an absence and expressing the norm that the board is committed to in-person quorums. Also included is a small change to the committee memberships. This year, we're, each board member is appointed to a single standing committee. This is with the intent of respecting each member's outside obligations and allowing each of us to give primary focus to the work of a single committee. To meet the goal of three members present at each committee meeting, a committee alternate has been appointed to each committee. The alternate is free to join in committee meetings at any time that a quorum is formed, but we hope that they will make a particular attempt to attend in the absence of a standing member. So those are just the tweaks that we've, we've added to the norms. It was an attempt to kind of capture some of what we've experienced over 2023, and with that, I'll open it to the members of the board for discussion. Anyone have any comments?
I was just gonna say, I think one of the things I've noticed is, you don't think people realize it just from watching at home. We come here, we sit here, we vote, and, but there's so much work that happens behind the scenes in the committees that we all are a part of, that I feel like the, the updated language really kind of draws attention to that, that there's just a lot of, a lot of the dialogue around, you know, what's a plan, what should we be doing is happening at that committee level. So I think the changes that were made to that, I think that really speaks to just how much, how important those committees are. So I think they were, I think all the changes were, were smart. So that's all.
Any other comments?
So.
Do we like our norms? We're good with them? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then we will consider these adopted as modified, and let's move on then to committee reports. The Curriculum and Technology Committee has not met since the last board meeting, so we'll move on to Finance, Operations, and Security Committee. Give me a moment to pull that. The Finance, Operations, and Security Committee met Tuesday, January 16th, with all members and our alternate present. The first topic of conversation was the 2425 budget. At this time, the, we're still waiting for additional information and key budget drivers, and most specifically, information about new housing openings for the 2425 year. That's a key driver of the budget, and that information is something that we're still working on. And of course, state aid is always a number that comes down the road. But I do want to let the public know that the district is again this year eligible for an enrollment adjustment due to an increase in enrollment. It is also eligible for a healthcare adjustment due to the increase in the cost of healthcare, and of course, an inflation adjustment. While we're not in a position at this time to predict what the actual tax levy will be, we do expect that the tax levy will exceed 2%. So at the next board meeting, we hope to have more concrete information to share with the public with regard to the tax impact of the 2425 budget. The Finance Committee, as it did last year, will hold a public committee meeting on Tuesday, March 26th, at 6:00 PM. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to come and speak directly to the committee members of the Finance, Operations, and Security Committee about any finance, security, or operations matter that they think warrants our attention and should be discussed. It is particularly timed so that if people have questions about the 2425 budget, that they can come and, and interact in a Q and A session with the, with the Finance Committee. Also determined that this, what this, this was the first Finance Committee meeting of the calendar year, so budget buddies were assigned, and I invite each of the board members to look at the minutes and identify who their budget buddy is, and budget members of the Finance Committee will be reaching out to their buddies as we go through this process. In February, late February, and March, budget meetings will be held with each individual board member and the business administrator and members of the Finance Committee so that board members have an opportunity to become fully versed in everything that's going on with the budget. We moved then on to an update for the National School Lunch Program. And we reviewed again the school lunch program requirements of 5% of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch at any particular school triggers a participation in the program. At 10% of an eligible school population, that will trigger also mandatory participation in a breakfast program. For the 2425 school year, the snapshot date, if you will, when those numbers were looked at was October 16th, and the school, no, there was no school within the district that triggered mandatory participation in the breakfast program for next year. Participation in the lunch program will continue in the 2425 year. It is important to note, however, that subsequent to that date, two of the five schools have hit the 10% mark, and so participation in a breakfast program in future years is anticipated. It's highly likely that in the school year '25, '26, and beyond, that lunch and breakfast will need to be offered. Additionally, the New Jersey Department of Agriculture has completed its review of the district's lunch program, and the district has met all requirements and is fully approved. In the ongoing conversations with regard to the possible construction of a kitchen, the district has received a wetlands study for the middle school property. The wetlands study has identified the proposed site of a, for construction of a kitchen to be approximately two to three feet above floodline, and because of the closeness of that data, the recommendation is that the study be submitted to the State Department of Environmental Protection for certification of its results, which would allow construction to proceed for two subsequent five-year periods. The committee supports applying to the state for that certification. And the administration is also looking outside of construction as an option to local commercial real estate and other potential unused or unutilized space which might be available in the town as an alternative to kitchen construction. That effort is ongoing. And with that, does anyone have any questions with regard to the Finance Committee? Okay. Moving on, we have no readout currently for personnel negotiations and communication. So. At this time, we will move into the first opportunity for public commentary. This is the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to, to me, the presiding officer. Please note that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So at this time, looking to the audience, there's no one here in the room, so moving to Zoom. Does anyone on Zoom wish to make a public comment? Do I have a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain? Okay. Second opportunity for public comment is closed. Moving on to items for board consideration, Dr. Mingle, do you have anything you'd like to? Okay. Do the, any board member wish to pull any item on action items for a separate vote or discussion? Nope. Okay. Ms. Keller?
Motion to approve items for board consideration A1 through A2, B1 through B8, C1 through C6.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Right. I will call the roll. Mr. DeSai.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mr. Tor.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
Motion's pass six zero.
Okay. We do not have any unfinished business on the agenda for this evening. We also do not have any new business on the agenda for this evening. Does any board member wish to offer anything? Nope? Okay. We will move on then to the second opportunity for public comment. This is the second opportunity. It's open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address before beginning. There's no one in the room, so go into Zoom. Ms. Singleton. Okay. I thought I saw a hand raised for Ms. Singleton, but I guess not.
No, you did. I'm sorry. I was just negotiating how to unmute myself. I'm sorry. Rachel Singleton, 22, Dewar Trail West. With regards to looking in town for suitable properties, I was just wondering for the, a potential kitchen site. Is that to rent, or would that be to acquire permanently? That's just my, my question. I, I think looking in town is a great idea, if, if that's a way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Do we have any other comments from our Zoom audience? No? Seeing none? May I have a motion to close public commentary?
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
Aye.
Abstain? Okay. Second opportunity is closed. Dr. Mingle? Yeah? Would you please?
So we're, we're not closing off any options right now, so if, if there's an option for rental or purchase, we would consider those if it was the right location. So very early stages, as Mrs. Zahn said, but we're open to what we can see, and feel free to reach out if you have suggestions that we should consider.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. At this point, the board will move into executive session. Ms. Keller?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 104-11, permits the Board of Education to meet and close session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to close session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement and/or negotiations related to it, pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation, and/or matters of attorney-client privilege. Action will not be taken upon return of public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes, and be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Abstain? The board will now go into executive session. Oppose? Abstain? The board will now go into executive session.
Motion to return to public session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The board is in public session and?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ob- object? Abstain? Okay, we're done.
Thank you everyone.
Good night.